That's fine. Go ahead and call us work sessions are harder. I know this way is on the way up, but I just want to go over a few things. Proud to this way of coming up. Councilman Jackson, thank you so much for this education.
Dear by the way, still have been following God, which is thank you for this day for the love of God, who become more presence for God. We just thank you that you called us for such a time since. For God, we ask that you work in us and through us to be your will. For God, lead us by your spirit. Equip us with wisdom, knowledge and understanding of life and most of our love and unity. For God, we just submit ourselves to you. We yield to you for God. We just cast down every thought and every imagination that exhausts itself against the knowledge of you. For God, we just thank you that the enemy has no power, that all power and dominion belongs to you. For God, and we ask that you bring hope for your people and about it in us and throughout this meeting. In Jesus' name and prayer.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Before I bring Chief Graham up, you have before you the Senate agenda. The Senate item number one is to, this is just a transfer. We're gonna have to probably suspend the rules first. And the reason why basically we're gonna suspend the rules is just a transfer from Houston July. And due to the fact that we will be out, our next meeting will be January the fourteenth. And usually in cases like that, if it's a transfer, it's not much, you know, in depth that you have to do. And as far as with the inspection, I think they just had an inspection about six months ago. Was that correct? About six months, six months to a year ago. Number two, this contract that we brought in was on first read. At our last meeting, I had Ms. Ellison making copies for the contract for number three to four. Number five is the fourth invoice, the first invoice for the fixed excess inventory company that they requested just need to go on. And number six is basically just a routine that we do each year. Severe wellness, preparedness, tax holiday. These especially are the five items that we're gonna put on the Senate agenda. And I ask you if we would move forward with the Senate agenda with these items here. Are there any questions in the room? Yes, ma'am.
And this is, we're in work session right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we can discuss these. I wanted to bring up that on number four, I actually sent it out to everyone. My contract for Copeley is coming out of my oil lease funds for Ward Three and discretionary funds for Ward Three. It's this storm drain project that I've been trying to get complete all of last year.
Yes, ma'am.
And I finally got a contract and they've gotten everything approved for the legal municipalities to ensure we were doing things properly. And we're missing sixty-four drains covers in Ward Three. And if you all go through, you generally see those.
Blocks, concrete blocks.
Nope, not even blocks. We don't have blocks anymore. We have wood crates, yeah, wood pallets and crates hung over them. And we had, actually had a gentleman off of Montgomery that was mowing his lawn and stepped back and fell through a crate and hurt himself. And so I started working on that immediately. And we got a total of six for and Butler Works was working with us at that time. He got us this quote from Mr. Copeley. This is our third quote and he's remained consistent with the twenty-four thousand. Thank you because he said that it goes up or down, the cost of the iron is immediate. But he stayed consistent with us. So I wanted to put it on first read, but the president informed me that because it was actually my oil lease funds that he didn't believe it needed to go on first read. So if you all feel that it should, I'm not opposed to going on first read or consent agenda.
Okay. Also, I have passed now made a copy of the contract that Councilwoman Jackson was talking about. And also for the front house associates, we have a copy of the contract and a resolution for the severe weather.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I would think, and of course it's just nice to know that we made aware of the contract for the expenditure of my college orders. President, I think we should need approval of this council. There shouldn't be no objection. Let me rephrase that.
Okay.
There shouldn't be no objection because this is her own oil lease. Did the, did, did I try to go on this contract?
He did. Mr. Graham, you see it today?
You have a copy of that, this copy here, yes.
May I, I emailed it out to everyone, just so you have a.
Yeah, and I made a copy of it also.
And it is in, it is in the papers.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Right, number one is the same broadband ownership.
It's just a transfer from Houston to July. Transfer from Houston to July.
Okay.
Just a transfer, that's all.
The name is.
That's it, that's a transfer. Okay. Are there any other questions as far as with the Senate agenda here, the rest of you? Good with it?
Mr. President, you did say that we were going to suspend the rules.
Yes, ma'am. We got to suspend the rules first for item number one, then we can move forward with the, with the vote. Are there any other questions? Okay, also, we have two other items that I passed out. The first one is resolution one oh three. I thought the, I know there are some mixed feelings with this splash pad. But we were approved. And if we would like to move forward with it, because this project has been there since 2016. If we do not move forward with it, it could jeopardize in the future grants for the city of Selma. I know we started in 2016 with this item. So it's an agreement between the city of Selma and the government, Southern Federation, going into a agreement to start working on splash pads. They had a resolution. And the second one is the drawdown for the amount that we need to pay for the Wi-Fi downtown. We just need to approve, I think this is probably seventy-five thousand dollars from A L K. Currently, when the work is done, the S R A have this particular gentleman to do it. And you remember the city ordered to take it back, but this was done with the S R A got me to do this particular, you know. Wi-Fi project downtown and all the things that's before is reimbursing it. To make sure we just move forward with the payment of it. Our councilman Thompson.
I have, I have a question about this. From my understanding, when we went to the meeting about this, with this, using the seventy-five thousand dollars, is the, are you gonna take the from this according to what you're saying now we're gonna take from the seventy-five thousand dollars to move forward with this, with the Wi-Fi downtown?
The S R A money with.
That's what I need, I'm asking you a question.
Seventy-five thousand.
Uh-huh, it's, it's, it's the seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, because I mean, we're on the verge, you know, I think time is running out for us to use it up. Because I know, I think it has about two or three years. And I know we have probably less than maybe a year, but I know the time is running out.
Oh, okay.
Because we've been playing, we've been playing political football with it.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask you because of, okay.
Councilwoman Jackson, or Councilwoman Short.
Yeah, and that seventy-five thousand was gone by the local regional authority.
It was.
My memory serving, right?
That's correct.
And I think what has been done is is that land, what the scope of services is. And so the board said, oh, I don't see how we cannot afford not to pay the person who is.
Reimbursement, okay. Councilwoman Jackson, then Councilwoman.
Okay. So I, I guess my question was, which one were we talking about? So you were talking about the Wi-Fi, you mentioned the seventy-five thousand dollars?
Well, the reason why I was asking because, come on.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that you, you were talking about, I'm a little confused. Are you talking, are you talking about the Wi-Fi seventy-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
That, is that the question that you had? Because I have a question about seventy-five thousand dollars, but it's pertaining to splash pad. So I wanted to make sure that the answer you gave about political football back and forth was, which one was it about?
That was for both.
Do both of them come back on?
Yeah, but basically when I was talking about was the Wi-Fi.
The Wi-Fi.
Okay, you were talking about Wi-Fi, you were talking about Wi-Fi. So I want to ask the question in reference to the splash pad. And we have been going back and forth. Has anyone contacted a deficit to see if we could do a grant adjustment and budget modification to determine if we could actually change this grant? If they say we can, and it would hinder us from getting future grants because we decided to write for this and change our mind, then of course my vote will be yes, because I don't want to hinder us going forward. But if we haven't explored the option, then I don't want to vote on it because I would like the opportunity to ask for a grant adjustment notice and to determine if we could modify this grant. And if we could, then we could put in this, the funding that we received in a place that is actually necessary.
Because I know it's been, I know it's been started back to twenty sixteen.
Like restrooms.
Yeah, I know, started back in twenty sixteen, but we can see though.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Anything else?
Hello, is anything else, councilman?
Yes, sir. Have we contacted them to ask? Okay.
Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Short.
I can have a hand up earlier in regards to Wi-Fi, Mr. Graham, Wi-Fi. This is, this is money that is already there and available. However, this is a project that affects the city of Selma. And I, I'm trying to get an understanding of when we say the Selma Wi-Fi project. Are we talking about the services downtown?
Downtown.
And, and, and because the services downtown are terrible. If we're talking about the services that I'm thinking we're talking about. The, if, if you're downtown, it's almost like you get shut down, shut out of. You don't have access to anything. When I, when I cross the tracks, come, okay, y'all know where I live. Way down in that grand line, good access down there. When I cross these tracks, Broad Street headed to downtown, it's like I'm shut down. So I thought it was just me. My son was in the car with me one day and he said, Mom, what is, what is, what are y'all doing downtown? Because y'all have it all screwed up, teenage language. He said, y'all have it all screwed up. No one has access to anything once they make it into the downtown area. Now, this money may be available and it's, it's their money and all, but this project affects us. And I'm trying to see if we're talking about the same thing. And y'all, y'all help me because it's here or here because it's business hours.
Yeah, he says.
It's business hours. Is, is the I T department here?
Yeah, she, she here.
Okay, when I give this gavel back, I'm gonna knock on the door, see if they can come in here. Because I'm trying to see if this is the same project that I'm, does anybody else know? Uh, uh, President Boling.
No.
Councilman Boling.
Uh, from what I understand, this was that project and, and again, it is intermittent usage as far as it goes. But I thought there was supposed to be a revenue mechanism the mayor had spoken about. It's supposed to kick in once you got to a certain download level. And it's supposed to kick in and bring up something that says, hey, if you want to proceed further, please enter your credit card.
You gotta enter your credit card.
I've tried to use it several times in downtown area, never seen that pop up. But because of its intermittent nature, I was able to get on the hotspot of Carver's or one of those downtown businesses. So, so I think this is the same project, which again, if, if what we've got is what this is supposed to be, we didn't really spend our money wisely on this at all.
Yeah, and you say hotspot. Every time I come downtown, I have to find a hotspot.
Coffee shops got a hotspot, cars got a hotspot.
Coffee shop has one. I usually go downtown, the city treasurer has a hotspot.
Yep, library on my phone.
I have to find a hotspot. Even if you're doing a presentation, if you don't have a password and no one wants to give you the password to do a presentation at the convention center or performing arts center, no one seems to know the password that you could have a presentation. So people who come out of town and rent our buildings and have presentations, woe unto them. So you had your hand up, Councilwoman Jackson?
Oh, no, no.
Or was it Councilwoman? Councilwoman Thompson, you had your hand up?
Yes, I, the reason why I'm, I'm very concerned is, you remember when we had the meeting with, we were in downtown and you had all the other guys in with business was talking about the Wi-Fi? And it was said that there was some money, like the seventy-five thousand dollars that.
I want to say, I want to cut you off. I want to hear what you're saying. Would you not let doors say I think they come in? I'm fucking.
I remember when we went to the meeting downtown, Carl Boling was present. Trying to show you was present too, wasn't he?
I was there in New Area vicinity as to what it would involve, because I planned here. I, I don't know what experience you had have about a chair or anybody else as relates to Wi-Fi computer. But this company has done what project has requested of them, they have submitted their view. You know, the Delta Regional Authority was wanting to ban this money to the Selma region. Delta Authority slapped the city of Selma. And S R A, S R A gave the city of Selma the authority to relax these funds and afford what the grant struck the works. If you go back and look at the invoice, the invoice is very detailed. And this, this work, I'll kind of cheaply, and whatever hiccup has been experienced, I really don't know. But with time, it is not of the essence. Maybe we can get the company of Black Bell Technology to come, go in depth of what services has been relevant by example, so we can go ahead and make appropriations for its, for its services.
I would agree with that last part. We do need to get them in because when, when someone renders a service, no matter how much it costs, it needs to work. Um, that's, that's just like if I tell you, go do ten potholes and you give me an invoice. You did do work, so to speak, that's written on paper. So written here is done and it's written on paper. So what I'm saying is the actual product was not delivered as it is written. And we need to, Mr. Thompson, on the right, okay. And so we do need to stop this time. It's not of the essence and half Black Bell Technologies to come in to see what, what, what is it that we're supposed to be getting? This is a Wi-Fi cell project. It affect, it affects Selma. Even though the money was given to another entity to pay for it, the money is there. It affects our downtown area and the services that we're supposed to be when rendering. It's a cell project.
I would, I would, I would hope pray to watch me sit down and call to the owners of Black Bell that we would have a detailed description as to what we're experiencing as a result of forbidden out there and done, rather than people up there voicing what they experienced here. Just, just, just detail in depth as to what the problem is.
Councilman Boling.
Uh, and the explanation and the description that you said is very detailed, which is what we see there. They do list locations, rated installations to help make sure we have coverage. So it'd be nice to actually be able to get a demonstration of how well these installations work to provide the level of service necessary to make this a bioeconomic stream for us, as well as ensure that the S P D can get access to it because it does reference the St. James Hotel, which obviously we do not own. So installation of sixteen different things on that building seems something we have to adjust for since that's not even our building. But I would like to see it work and get some information to, to know how it operates and to make sure that we are all looking at apples and dabbles, not apples and oranges, here point.
Yeah, absolutely. We have Cotton House listed connectivity from the Cotton House to the Performing Arts Center, Saddle Blue Cafe, all this connectivity that's supposed to be happening around downtown. And are they ready?
They should, they should give a map of that that shows us clearly where those points are and where they're designed to provide service to.
Yeah, as my fact, Councilman, move like block that and certainly the whole city.
Right.
And, and, and I think it really go there some residential area.
They did, they're listed in that description, so if you go through there, you see a couple of them listed there.
So we need Black Bell Technologies, Mr. President. Is that, is that the away? If we can get them in.
So what's the schedule, Councilman, you, I mean, move forward with it?
I, I think, I think we need to.
Time line.
Well, if. If it's there, go, if it's there, go. I guess eleven hours. Who had it, just probably going two or two ahead of you. And.
Carry it over.
Well, let's, let's see if they have this, have a talk. That's limited, so.
Okay, Councilman. If I can get over the.
The first bill was received six twenty-eight, twenty nineteen, and the second was received ten-one, twenty nineteen. So rest us to get this now.
Yeah, I'm looking at October twenty-ninth.
It seems like we, we've been behind eight ball a little bit. I'm trying to get this rushed through. So I do think since we've already spent that much time and we've had that long, you know, what's a little longer to make sure we're doing things correctly, just to make sure.
Councilwoman Young.
Um, I, I would like for us to maybe plan out a, maybe a workshop, technological workshop and launch and everything, maybe explain further at one of these sites. And let us all bring our smartphones and, and have a kind of thing at one of these sites. Um, and, or maybe all of them have a little field trip and go around and check them out. Um, because this is, this is really important. Um, internet service is really important, particularly within the rural town. And, and I, I know because I've been to a lot of training on all this stuff. Every single, Ms. President, you know how many community development and economic development workshops and schools I've been to in the last one year. And every single one of them, and I'm, I'm willing to bet Ms. Medley would, would say ditto on this. Every single one of them have, have said rural broadband, rural internet access. They have all touted getting internet access available to the community. So we need to really make sure that, that in the places that they are supposed to be available so that we can begin advertising and doing things. That needs to be part of our plan that we're doing this in, in developing and in, in putting together our strategic plan. And, you know, we've got, we're, we're trying to get changes and the opportunities and, and all that. So that's, that's important.
Okay, we'll just carry it over to the first one here. All right, yes, sir.
I want to speak on this, on the splash pad. Johnson, my colleague's question, that question has been asked and answered. It doesn't mean we can't have answers again. We have been told that if this city do not go forward with this grant, that we will be jeopardized in the future grants from A D. So like I said, I have no problem with asking the question again, but I know the question has been asked and has been answered and that was answered.
That's it, okay. All right, we have Attorney Graham, you have. Name, Chief.
I don't know who he was talking to. Let's see.
Hi.
There you go. Hey, how are you?
Are there any questions for Attorney Graham? Councilwoman Thompson. Attorney Graham.
Or for what?
You had to listen to me.
No, I just.
I represent the front of the hall.
Correct.
Wait. You haven't finished my resolution? The resolution for, to move forward with the property?
Uh-huh. Uh, we need to know who the property owner is, make sure we have the right one. The most recent tax record has a civil dearman out of Wolden, I believe.
Wolden?
I think so. Just want to make sure from your residents who are concerned about it, your landowner in this case.
Yes, because he came down my house, he came by to see me the other day. And he said, every time he get a tenant in here, there's a problem with the problem next door. And I promised him that I would move forward on this here immediately.
So are we certain it's the vacant house?
It's the vacant house.
Next to the vacant lot?
Mm-hmm. The brick house next to the vacant lot. The house that look like all the.
It looks rough.
Yes, well, that's the property that I need to move forward on because it's unfair that it's citizens paying taxes and everybody that moves into this house, they have to leave.
Well, if we're certain that's, that's the nuisance property, then, then we can move forward with that address. But just want to make sure we have the right one and we do the resolution.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And my other question is that, have you did the research on what I was telling you about? How I wanted to remove from the former neighborhood, Ward Seven neighborhood, missed it. The new West Side Empowerment neighborhood. I no longer want to, to, to use that name. I would like to use Ward Seven Neighborhood Association. And I want to move forward with the five oh one C with, with that Ward, Ward Seven Neighborhood Association. I would like to remove that name from there and then I want to do the process of how that I will be able to do that. Because I did a little research on that and I don't want to, this, this is a, a new leadership and I don't want to use in the past what it, what has been present and is not following up under the right procedure. So I want to do the right procedures with this.
So is it gonna be a mentality emergency or is changing the name and?
We're gonna change the name and we're gonna keep. It's the same group of people, but we just changing it. Oh, yes, it will be a new name.
So?
Or save it as a new name.
No, the way that.
Five oh one C, so it may got five laws.
She, she's no longer using that. I'm not using that, she's damaged, probably.
Oh.
No, I don't want, yes, I want to do.
Sugar, you don't do, he can't do that. That's private. All you need to do is do the, get your, all you need to do is change the bylaws and get your board to sign that. All had to do reading. And he can't do it because it's not city.
Well, I did, well, in the first beginning, I did, I know. And, and I like doing things the right way, the legal way, because I don't want to be left hanging over my head. I want, when I do something, I want to do it the right way.
I understand. So I'm gonna take that separate from the city council, so from the city. So you don't want to get in trouble, you don't want to get yourself up here, yeah.
Okay.
So you have to keep that separate.
Okay, thank you.
Coffee, Councilwoman Young.
Uh, have you had any chance to track down that, that, that land situation we got going on over there?
Right now, we've been searching for the truth online.
Right, that's exhausted. Now we're gonna get into the safe and try to find that document.
We will, I'll, I'll see if I can call them, say my name, sure, that's it.
Yeah, because that, the longer we go with that, the more, that's gonna be just a very messy situation.
It will.
And I don't feel comfortable having anybody else approach the individual until we know legally where we are, even though I'd like to give him a heads up. But that's a pan over a box as well without proper legal opinion.
It is, and I just, I hate to, what do we need to encourage the city to go dig through? But if that's our only option.
Yeah, I, I mean, at this point, I don't know where else it could be. So if it's something I need to take some time off of work and go do myself, I, I, I'm more than happy to invest the time to ferret that out because we desperately have that beast to know, you know, what to do next. Are we gonna have a situation on our hands as they say? But I appreciate y'all's work on our behalf to get that figured out. Thank you.
I think I said Councilwoman Jackson, then Councilwoman Short and Councilwoman Dixon.
Attorney Graham, we had some question or council members that were uncomfortable with the Asamal contract. I contacted Attorney Jones regarding that contract and the language in the contract that states the law that they could sue or either party could, could bring remedy to the situation. So can you please explain that to the, to all of us so we can be sure that we understand it? I know that Attorney Jones says it's a fair contract and they didn't want to, you know, he's like, you know, lawsuit, it's not that common contract, he was stating the law, but he.
I can't, and I'm going from memory, but as I recall, one, I, I thought it was that particular clause more favorable to the city because it allows the city to terminate the agreement with thirty days notice for any reason. So if things aren't working out, or the city's not obligated to continue with the contract if we're unhappy with the services. And on the flip side, if, if the city breaches the contract in some other manner, then of course the other party has the right to, to seek remedy in court. And that's gonna be the standard of every contract, just the general. um, and that's going to be the standard of every contract, just the general law of Alabama and everywhere.
But you, you, you reviewed this contract, and you feel that it's a good contract, and it's not anything that causes you concern, because you would actually stake back or discuss it prior to.
That's correct, I, I think it's, it's probably way more on the city's side, as far as that particular clause is concerned.
I have a one that indicated that, in that contract that I read, it says, uh, by mutual agreement, either party can end this contract, and I was finding that, then it went on to indicate, uh, first it says, I'm trying to find this section. Then, and another clause that says, Osmond and the city can, um, consider, and I have some problems with that section, because I am, I have got gunshots in lawsuits with this construction and this council, I thought that clause would have missed fights, left the best, remember, or was the legal entity to put this contract together, that was just my opinion, and I stand by that, but, uh, I need to, Council, search some property, because I still got this contract on my phone, I will go back and look at that section I already referenced, uh, twelve, twelve thirteen MLK, MLK, it's a vacant house, it's a vacant house that is in disarray, and neighbors, next door neighbor who lives at twelve fifteen is requesting that the owners, uh, clean up their property, cuss the grays, and do some, uh, some tender loving kids to that property, because they're seeing rodents, and it's created a nuisance for him and his family, so if you will research their property, and let me know who owns it, and get a lift to them, and ask them if they would get their property.
We have, nothing, just a friend that led him, please take care of this now, um, but of course, if we have multiple properties that are due for resolution, then we can do them all at one time, so I'm glad to add him on one instrument if we need to.
Yes, it's such a late under the contract, termination of a cause, now this is where I have no problem, disagreement may be terminated by the client prior to his expiration, if Osmond for any reason, the client is not the city, fails, refuses, or is unable to provide the services, following a reasonable notice from the client and a ten day opportunity to cure, I would have found that, it says, um, in number eight B, termination of a breach by Osmond, disagreement may be terminated by either party, the terminated party prior to his expiration, if the other party, the breach party breaches any provision of disagreement, in that case, the terminated party may sue, all that is available at law, and in equity, and may seek to obtain injunctory against the breach, a threat and breach, of the breach of party obligation of disagreement, uh, I read that to say either party, even though it mentioned Osmond, in my opinion, this is either of them.
That's correct, both, I mean, the most practical thing there would be that if the city failed to pay contractor invoice, then they could sue the city.
Once again, I have a problem with that, I just have, I have a pain, as I retire too.
You are. Thank you, Councilwoman Short, do you want to follow up?
I, I just wanted to bring that up, because after we left, after you left, um, last week, this brought up as a concern, and I told, uh, the councilman that I would follow up, uh, with this, I sent, spoke to, actually sent to Attorney Jones a text right here that evening, then I followed up with an email and called him the next day, and so I wanted to make sure that you know that your concerns are valid to me, um, and I'm the one that's presenting this con- contract and, and sought out this, um, company, um, by hearing them at a lead present, lead event, and I, I just wanted to make sure that you're, you know that your concerns are valid, and that, um, they've been heard.
I, uh, I probably just threw that conversation.
We are now.
Because Jones said it was the contract, and I told him, if I have a problem, leave it alone, why you so?
Yes, sir, I appreciate it, thank you.
Councilwoman Bennett.
I want to go to some resolutions that we have been discussing and, and are still waiting, um, Councilwoman Thomas, if you asked this, I missed it, um, are the resolutions starting the keys?
Yes.
Um, where are we with that, tell me your name, one time, and I won't.
Great, I was.
Attorney Mo, um, where are we concerned with the resolution with the keys, that's the first thing.
I have no idea, um, I've made a call, speaking with Woody about resolution around who has authority over things, that's all I can come up with, um, so I don't think if it's due, that I need to get with Woody to find out what exactly we need to, to see what he meant by this.
That's why I'm interested in what you all are here, it's been a while that we've been working on this.
Is that the, I think is the right one, with the resolution from the council determining who has authority.
It's done, and by authority to call, uh, confirm that we could do what we were proposing to do, and I was on the assumption that the resolution was being drafted, and at some point about a month ago, I thought we were having a guess, ready to be going on, and so, since you're here, I decided to ask where we are with.
Uh, I don't know, but I always believe when I get back to the office.
Also, if you ask this, I mean, to the council, it's concerning, the resolution for, um, the resolution, if you took it over there, uh, for workers that were supposed to, um, I'm going to let us speak, because her hand, she's anxious.
I, I need to answer that for you, yes, I did, I, I, I took the resolution over there, and Attorney Woody was asking a lot of questions, he wanted to know, um, where we were going to get the, what type of salary we were going to pay the two people that we wanted to contract, and he wanted to know, uh, how much, uh, we were going to pay, uh, the two people that we were going to contract, and I went to, uh, I went to the, um, treasure office, I asked Ms. Wade before, um, what were the previous employees that were working for the public building, were doing the setup, uh, what would they get paid, and, uh, the two names that I recommended to, to ask were Robert Walker and, uh, two of the gentlemen's have other jobs, and, uh, Robert said he was the one, I think y'all was paying, they was paying him like minimum wage, seven dollars and something an hour, and, uh, uh, he did tell me that, uh, that he, if we were going to bring him back, uh, uh, to work as a part time during the setup, there's going to have to be more than seven, than minimum wage when he make it, who, who said that, Robert Walker?
So, okay, so I, I understand the mandate would put on you, and, and all those kinds of things, and I understand and advocate for yourself, but what I'm asking is, where, uh, where are we?
Woody said, well, he put it to the center to forgive him the two names and the amount of what they were making.
Okay.
He said it has to go in the contract.
I didn't know we were naming names, I thought we were naming positions.
Well, he said they, that you have to have the two, uh, people that we are hiring, they have to be named into the contract, now what Woody said, he said that the two people that we were hiring, they will have to be put into the contract, and the amount that they are getting paid in the contract.
Once we, once we chose two people, then we have a contract for, for those people.
Yes, and that's what he said, he said it would have to be, we would have to, uh, put it in the contract, because we are, if we're contracting them, he said it would have to be who we are contracting for to do his work.
Yeah, I was talking about the preliminary work that was agreeing, that we all vote and agreed on something, a resolution or something.
We did, we did.
I think the first thing.
The positions itself, the two positions.
And then once you get the names, then.
And then once we get the names, they can, we can do individual contracts.
I don't know why Woody do his stuff different than, uh, than Attorney, uh, our former Attorney John, uh, he wouldn't draw the contract up until we give all the information that he asked, required of us, and this is what he, he brought to me, and I, I was going to have to have another, uh, public building meeting, uh, the first of the year, because we had a standstill with, with him doing the contract, till we get all the proper information that that's supposed to go into the contract, he wasn't going to do it until we, we get all the information.
Okay, so my original question was about the resolution, about the positions, Ms. President.
That's it, what you just said.
I mean, approving the, the positions through resolution, did we do that, and I just missed it?
Yeah, we did, we voted on it.
So did, did the council pick those two names you just said?
No, we didn't, we didn't approve the names, we agreed to bring two people, two, two people in.
Okay, so are we going to approve the names tonight?
We don't have a one that, that would come back, the other two are working, and these are people that used to work for the city.
So can we approve that one?
The one, yes, he's retired, we can't approve him.
Anything else?
And, 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 uh.
Yeah, yeah, so let me just finish, because me and you are having a conversation, and I really want to talk to him, I want to go back to, uh, the, the, the resolution for the keys, if you could get that affirmation, uh, for us as soon, I don't even know who to talk to, now you, Woody, the whole firm, um, just, it's been a while, like I said, it's been a while, and I would just really love information, and last, last week, we, we, um, we owed a, a presentation of our citizens, and we couldn't even get into a simple door, like this door right here, that's inside the council chamber, because it was locked, and someone had the key to it, and we didn't have access to that person that had the key to that, today, I don't even know if we, it's unlocked today, I, I don't even know if it will be on the radio today, um, it is, it's paid for, and so, so just to get in a, a simple building, a public building, sometimes it's a hassle, particularly when you don't have access to the person that has the key, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever, and so that's why I'm concerned about this, because one day we're going to get into a, for a key to something that's very, very important, and somebody purposely will have that key and not be found, it will make themselves unavailable, and that's childish, and so I just need an answer to that, to where we are on that resolution, so we can move on and get a locksmith and change these locks, like we voted on.
Well, I will give away soon, we'll get back.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I thought we were telling, and he already stepped through it.
Yeah, I was writing on the research.
All right, any councilwoman comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say this to this panel, I know you asking the questions, and I was the chairperson, I did what I was supposed to do, uh, our attorney that represented this city, he's aware, he has the resolution about the keys, he knows this, and he agreed that he knows the law said the council is the body soul of the city building, and they can have the keys, the keys will be turned over to the clerk, now, the only thing that's a problem with our, our, our city attorney, is because he, he represents this body, and he represents the mayor, and, uh, he knows that, uh, you know, he has the resolution, he knows that we can't, but I think he has a problem with moving forward with this, I'm just going to be honest, because I have talked to him several times about this, uh, I think he has a problem with, uh, you know, sometimes people, you, we put people in places, and, uh, I know he's the attorney, and he represents the city, and he represents, uh, the mayor, and he, he just, I don't know why, but I asked him that, uh, you know that we can do it, and you know we put a resolution there, and, uh, he just didn't move forward.
So the resolution has been produced and just not presented, is that what you're saying, Councilwoman?
He has it, he, he knows it, he, he even told me that, yes, we can change the locks, but he did not, uh, just present it to us, and write it, give it to us, he knows.
All right, any other questions for Attorney Moesley? Also, I think council members, uh, you should have received the email last week from the mayor in reference to our administrative assistant, I did mention to, uh, Attorney Moesley that I will begin with you, I have some questions, and, uh, we can move forward from there.
In that communication, he did reference that he had, uh, he had contacted the league, and the league, of course, in that communication, appears the league is half the film, and his, uh, definitive statement that just, Councilor Harold, that we're going to do what we did, and I'm hoping that we can get some resolution, so that we can continue to operate decently and afford, and afford also, so, uh, let our attorney give us a clue back on that.
I did miss not begin with them on it, because there's some other things, too, I've been looking at the personnel manual, that, uh, there's some other options we can look at also, I'm going to get this one.
Okay, I would like to talk on that, uh, email that I have, and also doing, by me, the experience of my training under the section code, uh, eleven forty-five, five, uh, we must remember, for a year, in, a year and a month, in exactly today, uh, this city was not operating on a day-to-day operation, because we did not have, this body, council did not have anyone in there, we were handling our own, taking care of our own, uh, situation, and had other people helping us outside.
God knows sometimes. Go ahead.
Huh?
Go ahead, I said, God knows sometimes.
Yes, and, uh, when you make, you use that section code article against this body, saying that we are interfering your day-to-day operation, when the day-to-day operation, we did not, we did not have anyone sitting in that seat for a whole year, and, uh, from my understanding of my training that I've took, in, uh, under that section code, that is, uh, is not, that's not true, you cannot come back and, and use that against the, the council, saying that, uh, uh, we contract her, we didn't hire her, we contract, and I talked to the league too, and see, sometimes you don't tell the league the whole story, so me as an elected official, I had to tell the league the truth, I had to tell the league we had nobody in there for one year and so, so the council did not, uh, we did not, uh, override eleven forty, eleven forty-five, five, because there was no one there, we didn't have a day-to-day operation for the council body, and, uh, all of us were doing our own, and, uh, we did not invalidate anything by going out, we can contract, we can contract, uh, so I feel that, uh, sometimes if you don't get the right leadership and tell the right story, uh, we call the, the league, you must tell the league exactly how the city, what been running, and, uh, as me, as an elected official, that's what I did when I read the letter, because I have my, we have our tools that we go by, we look and we read, and then you have to ask the question, now, if the league thinks that it should be followed up, there are, Rob did tell me that he will talk to the attorney general and get the opinion, because it wasn't told that we didn't have no one for a year in that office, it was told different, so.
Should absolutely go, I think the AG is the best person at that.
Yes, and that's what Rob said, that he would take that out, that information to the AG office to find out the base rate, because we didn't, we did not break his, we did not override him, because he didn't have anyone in him, this, this body, this council been working on their own for a year, in a month, in two weeks, then you come back and break section code on the, on the council, you try to play your, we tried to take over your day-to-day operation, we never took over, we sat back for a year, we sat back for a year. We sat back for a year, it's a month, and it's, it's okay. That's not fair. We know that you are not fair, we know what I'm saying. We know what it is all about, say.
Okay, councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Short, councilwoman Benjamin, and.
Yeah, Councilwoman Short.
Okay, I, I sent a smoke cleaner up from Mr. Thompson, he said, and then also we have to give him our thoughts.
Okay, so, um, what I did, like with the school, of the email on my phone, and see, I think it starts off, um, wrong. On the page, recently I reviewed an action taken by the council as it relates to hiring employees. Specifically to the council, which is not a department, the clause very clear of day-to-day operations. And so Lori goes on to say, in light of the twenty-eleven Coachman case, the answer is most likely no, in Scott versus Coachman. The Supreme Court of Alabama has held that the mayor has authority to hire most municipal employees. We didn't hire employees, we contracted. And the council has the authority to approve or deny contracts.
That's right.
And so I think it starts off incorrectly and gives the assumption that we hired an employee. Uh, just like we're gonna do with ASMA, just like we have here with Cogan and all the other contracts, uh, that we've done, it's a contract. And that's all. And so when I, when I read it, then I was just like, oh, the mayor's recent form because we have a contract and, uh, an employee. We've contracted with someone to provide a service. Are we allowed to contract?
The council can enter into contract.
Yes, why?
Hours, just, and it's really, it is not a black and white question, which is, uh, the lead and I think that the AG needs to answer for us. Is the council can approve the contract, that the executive, the mayor, is responsible for executing the contract, see, the contract is fulfilled. So if the contract, contractor does not, effectively does not answer to the mayor, the mayor can't fulfill his professional duty of executing the contract. And it leaves.
So maybe, maybe I see, so, well, ASMA contract and all the other contracts that I've specifically brought and that he has chosen not to sign and execute. Um, and before this specific contract, um, then you all have allowed actually put the, the council president's name on it and say, if he doesn't sign it in this amount of time, go ahead and have the council president sign it. The mayor didn't execute on that, on those terms either, so what's the difference, help me understand.
And it is, Lori's position of the lead, if the mayor fails to do that, then she says there's a very good argument that the council can then appoint another person to fill that contract with.
We did.
Okay, so, so let me make sure that I understand, um, council members, as I remember it, that you, and see, we give the mayor the opportunity, as I know I've done with every one of my contracts, to sign the contract with the worker that is providing services to the council. Was he given that opportunity? Mr. President, are you saying yes? So he was given that opportunity and he failed to do, just like so many other contracts that he's failed to do. I know all of mine, I'm not sure about anyone else's, but I know that, uh, he has not signed not one of my contracts. And so if he failed to do that, then where's the argument that he hasn't executed? Because if the truth be told, he hadn't executed a lot of things for the last several years.
We have the more narrow and broad definition of execute. Occasionally, we're just talking about signing. Signing that is, is one thing, executing in the legal sense of fulfilling the contract and following up behind supervising the contractor and making sure that they've done the work they said they were gonna do and ensuring that the city's getting, that everything the city is contracted for, they're, they're received. And the particular thorny issue in this case is if we have someone who's in the city hall with access to city hall who's outside of the mayor's control, is that pervert? And that's why the AG has to answer.
Okay, so let's, let me, let me make sure that I understand, execute. Um, so has the mayor gone around to make sure that Denmark and all the, has he made sure that they did their job, they did perform it well? That they, that he execute in those areas? Uh, and he leaves city hall. Sir?
Whether he did personally or delegated or did anything, I have no idea.
So you, you have no idea what he did, that he wants the opportunity to do that with his staff, that in this contract position. I don't see any problem if he even wants to come and see if she showed up because she's a contract worker. So her time is in to ensure that she brings her, her cell agenda, I mean, if she performs the duties that we've selected, I mean, she's not an employee. And so he can't say he'd be, he'd come here at nine o'clock and leave at, at four o'clock. He, I mean, you don't do that with, I mean, the law is very specific about that as well because I can't tell Denmark, once I enter the contract room, that I work, I can tell them the timeframe that I want to work on, but I can't tell them when to show up and when to cut down a tree and to cut it down on the left side versus the right side of the street, I can't do all those things. And so the fact that he wants to execute this contract, but he's failed to execute other contracts, sign, or even though that the work is being done. Because if you're gonna execute and you failed to sign, then you don't know the work is being completed 'cause you had, don't have a copy of the contract. You're not going back, back to make sure that the work is actually being done and there's quality on it. And so I don't know why in this particular case, maybe it's because it's in his building, um, as he calls it, um, that he feels this way. But the council has to have someone that can answer the call, that can be rather, I had, um, the gentleman here, the inspector, um, tell me one day just walking in with a meeting with, um, councilwoman Benjamin and councilwoman, no, councilwoman Thomas and councilwoman Youngblood, that someone had been calling me for three months. He said that they finally got to his office and they said they had been calling the mayor's office and I don't know that to be true other than the gentleman saying, I've been calling city hall for three months and I finally got in touch with you. But that gentleman gave me the information, I'm quite sure someone was answering that call or if the mayor would have allowed the president and others to continue to have the calls forwarded to him, then there would have been a three-month delay between constituent and a council person. I would have had, I would have had the opportunity to speak to them prior to that delay. And so to suggest now that he wants to execute, I think is just another way to impede upon the progress that the council is trying to make regardless of his efforts to deter us.
Thank you. Councilwoman Short.
Next, and I would like to go ahead and go next before I forget my thoughts. Um, so I'm gonna go to when you all get ready to meet, when you all are gonna meet on this, uh, the president has already said that. Um, but please have the instrument, um, put in your notes to make sure you have the instrument that, uh, the council voted, uh, that the president, uh, would be next in line, if you would have that document or those set of minutes, you, you're gonna need those. Uh, also, I was, I was informed that the mayor has already said he will refuse to sign the contracts. And, uh, please have that instrument with you or that documentation with you, uh, when you are concerned in that. Uh, we know that the lead has begged the mayor before and the mayor has lost in a court of law. And so, yeah, to that. Um, so also, we have here a contracted person, and we have a lot of contracted people. And we have no problem with the mayor coming upstairs and make sure this person's doing their work. Go ahead, if you would like to do that, come on up, come on up and check and make sure they're doing their work. Then go ahead and execute, that's the definition that you have given us of execute. Go ahead and execute and check on that, go, go ahead and do that. But also remember that you have been absent in the place of signing the contracts and have, have refused that part of it. So remember that when you come up to make sure you want to execute on the other end and y'all are discussing that, put that part in the discussion that even though you have refused to sign the contract, you want to, this particular, this particular contract for hire, this one, not ASMA, not Woods Construction, uh, not anyone else, but this particular one, you, you, you want to go and administer concerning this contract. So please, in your discussion, Attorney Mosley, consider all those things as you all discuss and, and go along.
Yeah.
Can I, I want to thank the council. I don't represent the mayor himself, I represent the city.
Right.
When there's a conflict between council and the mayor.
Right.
That's why we don't want to get involved in those at all. So, we, when your discussions we have are not gonna be adversarial to one side or the other, and I understand the council has its own separate council, Mr. Segal, um, that, um, can represent the council alone. And so we, just to make it clear that we're, I'm not here as a representative of the mayor, only as of the city.
Absolutely, I don't represent, uh, the email, hopefully you have a copy of it, that Mr. President said that he was gonna get with you and you all are gonna discuss it. So if you all are gonna discuss it, but you feel uncomfortable with that, then you should let us know that we should, uh, seek Attorney Segal because if you are uncomfortable with that and it will cause a problem in your law firm between you all and the mayor at any point. Uh, it's not gonna cause a problem with us at any point. We, we are better off knowing that on the front end so that we can know, because, and do you have a copy of the email?
Yes, you, you see your copy.
Okay, okay, you received it on the email.
We saw that, the, the opinion of the lead.
Yeah, I saw the, I saw the law that, uh, Lori referenced and it's concerning employees. It's concerning the hiring of employees and the appointment power of the mayor. And, and I saw her answer say, saying that it is most likely no, most likely no.
All right, and also, before I go to, I think Councilwoman Short, you had to end up here. Councilwoman Short, Councilwoman Bowlin, and Councilwoman Youngblood, they moved forward. When I signed the contract, I was under this impression that he wasn't signing any more contracts.
That's what was told, is.
Yeah.
Yeah, what they had in the law firm, which was that, uh, that, that law firm hired to represent the city as, as the councils said. And, uh, and of course, none of us had shingles hanging out, and we couldn't, we had legal expertise. What we have now is another debacle that's gonna happen because so many people have their own opinion. I think what we need to do, and do religiously, wait until there's some legal, uh, information thrown back to us as to where, where and how we stand in this problem. And if the answer isn't what council people want, then you need to accept it whether it is likely or not. Because this is what they're hired for. And I, and I don't see, this law firm indicating that they gonna take our hands off of this issue, they gonna sign the law, they gonna tell us what, what's legal and what, what their recommendations are. And if we don't follow it, then I don't think we have, or should have, or be so quick to run and get Bobby Segal to, once again, charge us a lot of money simply to give us an answer that we, that we, that we want. So once again, we're relying heavily on the law firms, a gamble and gamble, to give us a legal definition as to what we stand with this issue that is plaguing us now.
I think Bobby Segal gonna go by the letter of the law, not so much what we want. Councilwoman Bowlin, Councilwoman.
I, I think the part that was missed here was the onsite, offsite. Again, the contract that we have primarily is gonna be an offsite contract where you're gonna hire somebody to go out there and cut trees, do stuff like that. But in this case, the employee is, again, an independent contractor hired, but has access to the city's facilities, the city building, which is unique, uh, in the situation we're talking about. You said that that was kind of the sticky wicket in this particular situation, and, and aside of the fact that she's either a contractor employee or a regular employee, but if she's a contracted employee, she gets access to the building without the mayor's permission, that's an issue, is what you guys were thinking legally.
Yes, and that's, that's, as I understand it, that's the point of contention.
Right.
As far as the laws concerned.
If she was offsite doing what she does for us, he wouldn't care. Or at least that, in theory, you know, right? So, so again, if she was, you know, if she was downtown somewhere in some building with an office, the council pays for it, all that stuff, just doing her job, that would not be an issue. The point that you're trying to determine as well as contract versus employee is to find out whether or not the access to the building as an independent contractor is an issue.
Well, uh, the, as far as I'm concerned.
Right.
It doesn't matter what kind of contract, whether it's to remove a tree or clean up the garbage bins.
Right.
It's, council can enter into the contract, the executive's got it and essentially enforced or executed the contract.
So again, to Councilwoman Jackson's point earlier, so that means the contracts have been signed by President Bowie as part of the council's adjustment before a lack of signature on the mayor's part, those are called into question in this process as well.
Yes.
But again, if the mayor is not responsible or doesn't, you know, derelicts his responsibility to ensure that the city's running in a proper fashion, the council has to reach out to get other services because of males, of shortage of, of personnel or whatever those issues may be, then, then, uh, you know, obviously that was the original opinion that we could enter into those contracts. So now we're looking at a reversal of a previous legal decision that was made by someone in the process?
There's not a reversal because the council can't enter into the contract.
Right, but I mean, as far as, like, when I hire somebody to come work for me, right, nobody checks on that except for me. Right? So I, I got the contract, I worked a deal out with the gentleman, I sent it over to y'all for it to be written up to make sure, you know, all the legalese is there. And then, uh, and then the contract was not signed by the mayor, uh, for whatever reason, still don't know why it wasn't signed. I guess perhaps he alluded to the fact, I guess in conversation with the attorneys, that that should be something the city does on its own. Well, if the city has a shortage of personnel, they can't do it, so therefore we have to have a responsibility to the constituency to ensure we have safe, clean areas for them to live. So again, if, if, if we cannot execute or we cannot, you know, uh, enter into contracts and see that contract's executed, that's his responsibility, well then there's dereliction of duty on his part to not execute the contract. I mean, 'cause we, how can we be hamstrung, I guess that's y'all trying to figure out. But again, if we, if we've got trash all over one and he doesn't sign a contract for us to clean up that mess, we cannot sit mildly by when we know there's a safety issue and not have that done, that's dereliction of our responsibility. So I mean, this is entering into another realm that is, is more and more dangerous as we get closer and closer. Because now you're looking at dereliction of duty and that's, that's not a good situation to be in as any elected official, in my opinion. But that's where I see it, I mean, unless I'm missing something. If I can't get that cleaned up by the city, I have to do it because I can't have an unsafe environment. It's like, if you get, Mr. Thomas says, hey, I got a pothole and someone calls me and says, you got a pothole and then you don't get it filled, then somebody drives a car into it, well, the city's liable. Because we know that there's a pothole, we were informed by the citizenry there was a pothole, and we did nothing to fix the problem. So we're putting our situation, we're putting additional liability on the city by not acting in a timely fashion to ensure the safety of the constituents that elected all of us to be up here in the first place. So that's a real important fact to get figured out because I got a contract sitting in my truck to get executed and I don't wanna do something illegal, so, I mean, we need to get a timeline on this quick, if we can. I mean, I know the holidays is bureaucracy, so it's not gonna happen quick, but, uh, that's a pretty important situation for us. All of us pass contracts and current contracts.
And the council has designated the president to sign the contract.
Right. But no issues ever been had as a result of execution of contracts outside city hall, that I know of, that's why I was curious, there it is. So again, if we, if we don't have a situation, that, again, I understand the contracted employee versus the independent, you know, independent contractor's employee. But again, I have a contract, it's the first contract ever done as a city councilperson, because normally the city has arrived on the scene to accomplish whatever goal it is. But if we've got a responsibility to the citizens to do something and there's a legal issue to Councilwoman, uh, Council President Bowie, execute the contract or sign the contract and then the execution issue is an issue, I don't see how that applies to, you know, picking up trash, per se. Uh, but does it, I guess, apply to picking up trash? From where y'all are going illegally to figure out the determination on the city councilperson.
And that's why the lead recommendation was to AG to weigh in one way or the other on, on, as I understand it, the lead's position is that there's a very good argument, or whatever that's worth.
Right.
To that the council can designate someone else that, that may does it, or executive, whatever position it is, doesn't, to designate another person or entity as opposed to oversee the contract.
Okay, so.
That's, that's, that might not have been something that's answered me now like a while, whether.
Okay, so, so the contract I have sitting right now in my truck to get that Midland Road cleaned up, best to hold on that until we get this opinion or, or execute?
No. It's.
'Cause I don't wanna do anything, you know, necessarily illegal, but, I mean, the good folks at Midland need to get it cleaned up. And I have not, and the mayor's defense, I have not contacted the mayor to ask about it, I did send an email inquiring, I said, please advise, but I never heard anything back, so I don't know, I just took matters in my own hand and contracted somebody. So I wanna make sure I'm doing it lawfully and if I have to wait to execute this contract until this time his opinion is rendered, then that's all.
Councilwoman Brown. Councilwoman Benjamin.
We all have feel very impassioned about this and Lord knows, nobody, nobody on this council in this town knows more than I do that nothing like feeling impassioned and compassionate makes, makes your, your mouth overload of derio like feeling impassioned about stuff. But what we need to keep in mind is that there are people way far up the legal chain and food chain that have to make these decisions than we are. that have to make these decisions than we are before we really can. So we can sit here and blather on like I've done for years, get up here and blather. And I've wasted so much time and blather, um, when we can, we can wait and, and hear about the rulings and then make decisions that we need to, you know, then do the things that we need to do. And save ourselves some aggravation and energy loss. And, um, but also to address the fact of, of the, the gambling firm is hired to represent the city, that means they need to represent the mayor. Sure, they represent us, um, the council, they represent all of us. They represent the best interest of the city. Actually, that means the people. So, they can't represent us or the mayor, who's got his council. We've got our council in there like the Red Free, I guess. Um, actually, the gambling firm of, of Harry Gamble is my attorney for, you know, um, personal things. So, um, if they, if it came down to having to, to do something, pick something for us or against us, they would have a, a conflict there, so, and I mean, other things too. But anyway, um, it's just these things, we, we all have such deep rooted feelings about it. It's just hard to step back and look at it very well. I want to thank you, Mr. President, and each council member for all that, that you have to do on behalf of the citizens about this. And it is very, very, very confusing, it's confusing to me.
Okay, we got Councilwoman Jackson, then Councilwoman Thompson. Then we need to move forward because we have Chief Graham here, who needs to bring us some information, also Mr. Thompson.
Okay, and, and that's why we're at a work session, working out. And so this is the topic, and I have my hand up on the follow-up, onsite, onsite, and all of those kinds of things. And, and actually, I think if you're standing there listening to us, because I'm actually talking to the council at, at this point, um, because I know that you're gonna meet with the president, is what I'm saying. Uh, so council members, remember, both, uh, Councilwoman Youngblood and I have always, um, contracted, um, winter interns. Okay, uh, we didn't last year because it was just so much chaos going around. But we have always, during this administration and the previous administration, we have always contracted, um, winter interns who have had access to all things City Hall. Those winter interns return every year, or sometimes we get different ones, but we've always contracted them and they had access. So, council members, I don't think it's about that. We've also contracted, uh, so we were told in our surprise at the Recreation Department, um, employees that got to use our paint machine, got to use our equipment, the school paid them, but somebody else, some.
Contractors.
Contractors, they were contractors, right, Madam Chair? Somebody else approved it into our, our shop, um, you know, we learned that information later. Those were contracted folks too, uh, council members, and I'm talking to you when I say this. So, let's not get into something where this turns into this not being about the position and being about the person. We should be tired of lawsuits around here. We should be tired of going to court around here. Let's not turn this into being about a person. Let's not turn it into being about a person. I, I, would you pull the record from two thousand, there's a two thousand seventeen near that you can pull. I've had winter interns, Councilwoman Youngblood has had winter interns. They've had access to computers, they've had access to printers. No one downstairs came up to monitor them. Councilwoman Youngblood has come up, and I have come up, uh, to make sure. These were contracted young people, con, we've, we've had contracted. So we cannot turn this, this into being about a person. We cannot turn that into that, or we'll be back in court. We'll win again, but we'll be back in court.
Excuse me, and I forgot to say about one point I forgot. We, you know, when you call, uh, snailing and snailing of the temporary people like that, that's, they're contract workers.
Yeah.
The DA's office is done.
You have contract workers almost every year.
And a lot of places do, when you get summer workers, um, and taking, when you get temporary workers. But when you call surge, you know, the temporary labor sources, they're contract workers. Anyway, anyway, I'm sorry, temporary workers, so that's.
Councilwoman Jackson, then Councilwoman Thompson.
Um, Attorney Moser. Um, I'm sorry we kept you up here so long. We were, we were all elated about how early you got in and out of here last year, last week. Make sure on the email, it's only referencing one position, but we did, um, enter into a contract. We haven't named anyone yet, but we approved it into a contract for the Welcome Center. That wasn't named in the email. We are considering entering into a contract, um, person, position for the, um, clerk's office. That wasn't entered or referenced in the email. And it may not have been referenced because they're not in place yet. But the fact of the matter is, those are all things that the council is considering. So, as, um, Councilwoman Benjamin stated, just say, all contracts in city buildings that may be considered or under the council oversight or undersight, or they've entered into a contract. Because as I stated, we're considering, are we not, the clerk's office? And we've already stated the Welcome Center. Uh, so there, they, the contract has been approved, the amount has been approved. They, all we got to do is put the individual's name in it.
The Welcome Center's my fault, I'm taking care of that.
So you're not going to, you're gonna rescind that vote on the Welcome?
No, no, I'm taking care of that, I'm gonna do the contract and all that stuff.
Right, and so what I'm saying is, he's, the mayor is stating, or you all, um, the contention is that the council can't enter into those kinds of contracts because you have employees or individuals that the mayor needs to execute. That is a city building, that is a city, city facility. Uh, and so those also need to be mentioned, so it's not tailored to one person or one contract. All the, the contracts that are being, um, discussed and or considered before the council needs to be in the email, needs to be addressed, all of that together. Because right now, it does look like it's specifically about a person and contracted position that someone doesn't want in that position. Because nothing else has been referenced.
It's, it's, the question is, not that the contract, whether the, the council can enter into a contract, hm? It is whether the contractor can be outside of the supervision, for lack of a better word, of the executive. Maybe they can, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't think, I'm sorry, I don't think, and I've never thought, um, in a broader context, that it would be outside of the mayor's scope. Uh, he's in the building, if he wants to walk around, and it's the Welcome Center. I never thought, it never came to mind that this would be someone that's excluded, that's in a box and the mayor cannot discuss things with, cannot talk to, cannot enter a room with. And so, I don't, maybe he's, he's assuming wrong, or his, his thought process is wrong. Because I don't know of anyone else, but that never crossed my mind. He's in the building, so if he says the building closes at four thirty, you're still here, you have to leave. You know, so I, I, I just never thought about that. I, I don't think that's a point of contention for the council, that he speaks with anyone at the Welcome Center, anyone in this building or any other building. Because we're also considering contracting someone to clean the buildings, right? I mean.
Puffing the buildings.
Right, puffing the buildings. So, just enter all those contracts that may be filed under. Yes, he's contracted security people, in, in this fair view. Thank you, Councilwoman. But he didn't have the rulings, don't go. No, I'm sorry. God bless.
Doors of the church, Councilwoman.
I just want to remind my colleagues of, um, doing, I'm doing my training, I've learned this, and a lot of information has come out. In two thousand twenty, uh, book we get from the lead, it tells us what the attorney generals say that with the situation like we're having now, that when we need to do work that's not being done on a day-to-day operation, it's up on the leaders, it's up on the elected officials to carry out that if we got potholes, if we, if our city needs cleaning up. And I just want to say that it's, it's gonna be two thousand twenty. And I think that our, our year should, should start off doing what's right. And all of us got elected to do what's right. And if we're gonna keep our city together and we talk about everybody coming in, all this new business coming in. So, let's focus on making our city like other cities, which we be, we already connected to, a lot of us connect to other cities and relate to things of what's going on. So let's make Samuel be, be great.
Thank you.
Great.
Because I mentioned, when I called this morning, I asked specifically if we come from some background or something.
Yeah, on Monday, I think the office will be closed, part of it's Christmas Eve.
So what now?
So the office will close for, um, holidays, or a couple days. Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
Well, just, just call many times now, my last week, the call was, yeah.
I'm glad. Is that for me?
I forgot to add my agenda. I want to add a item on my agenda, but I'll get with Graham, or if I can become the agenda. It's work session.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I didn't get a chance to turn my work. Uh, and, what, Councilwoman Johnson, you're present? Um, I would like to say, uh, with this added on to the agenda in dealing with what you was talking about the last coun, last council meeting, about your, the people that are laid off. Do your, do your, uh, I want to ask you this question before I put this, uh, this to the floor. Do your people have, uh, city, they're, they're city employees laid off, right now they don't really have a job. Do they have, do they have licensing, insurance to do this work?
Uh, that's on, Councilwoman Thompson, uh, it won't take about a few minutes for them to get that.
Okay.
Uh, there's no problem with that, just like everyone, everybody else, have to get, go get licensed and, and insurance. Uh, so everyone that I have hired during my contract didn't have it, but they did when they got it. So it won't take about a few minutes.
Okay, well, President, well, I want to put this on my, uh, on my, consider agenda that, uh, the gentleman, his name is, uh.
John Lawson.
John Lawson, uh, with the other groundwork around the, the city property. I would, I want to put a, uh. Yes.
I had a conversation with Mr. Lawson, and yes, he's in the process of doing an estimate on it now, Councilwoman, uh, Thompson.
Oh, he is?
Uh, and then sure, and just as soon as they get the estimate, they'll talk to me, then I will bring it back.
Okay, that's what I wanted to put. Yeah, that's what I wanted to put on there, because we got the other, everything else is going great, uh, downtown and the other groundwork, I wanted to, he said that they could do it. So I wanted to put that to the floor, for that, city property.
Thank you, Mr. Moser.
Thank you.
Come on, Mr. Thompson, there's, you can follow.
Hello. Sit.
Get up on the bottom seat. Try, hit down right there.
Yes, that's on.
Get up. Get down.
I'm dead too.
Probably dig the battery. Got to get some battery. See, she got it, she get it.
Just talk louder, okay, I, I can talk a little louder if necessary. And, um, I had, um, two documents, uh, it's sent in regards to, one was the contract for Great Western, Great Southern, um, recreational trip trails. That was a part of the Hell C F, ADECA, uh, grant from two thousand sixteen. It was, um, the fifty, uh, fifty, uh, match on the splash pad for Riverfront Park. And the reason it took as long as it did was the actual bid was over the actual scope budget that we had allotted for the project. So the engineers had to go back and negotiate and work out a feasible price that would ultimately fit within the scope of our project.
What project was this?
It began in two thousand sixteen. And what issues we're having is, we already applied for one extension under this project and I don't think we will be able to get another. We may, but I don't know, that's a question that we have to ask.
Henry, is that splash pad set slated to be just a standalone thing?
Standing alone.
Like just that sound, just a splash pad? Or was it set to be in conjunction with some other thing?
Well, there's a whole scope of work. We eventually intend to, um, put fencing as well as, uh, seed around it, as well as shades.
Okay. Um, I, I have done some checking, um, splash pats and things, and some talkers, some other people. Uh, I, I don't want to have a discussion about it now. But let's, I, 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 well, and, and that's not slated to happen real quickly, so we'll have, you know, I, I, it wasn't, I was real excited about the splash pad, carried the torch toward.
I, I guess the major issue with that was, you know, in regards to that, um, we've done the design work and the implementation based off of what's received. And ultimately, what would happen if we decided that we wouldn't want to continue this project now? From where we are, first of all, we asked them for an extension off of ADECA funds from two thousand sixteen. They agreed to give us an extension. Then, if we tell them, well, we just decided we don't want the project. We're ultimately gonna lose all of that design money from building deals and cable that we've already spent in regards to actually do, design as well as, uh, putting the implementation in place. I'm fine if you all want to, but I just want you all to be aware of where we are and what is gonna go from here.
Well, there's some things we're not, let's have a conversation about some possibilities. I spent some time with some good deals people last week.
They will be available as well.
Well, Sandra Campbell and Eddie here were down. We had, I had lunch with them last week.
Right.
We took, we went out and looked at some things, we spent the afternoon together, so.
And I am totally open to any of that, or any of you all speaking to them, as well as our Alabama, Tom Bigby, who, uh, actually, uh, worked on this project with us as well. And kind of, uh, helped us in regards to getting our extension letter sent out to ADECA. And they are very familiar with the ADECA process as well. But all of these people are available to talk to, as well as ADECA is. We can give ADECA a call and see if they're willing to. I don't think they will though, and that's not just coming from me, that's coming from Alabama Tom Bigby, as well as, um, the contract that we agreed to. So that's ultimately, and I don't know if it will affect our optimism in the future, I don't know. But we can ask that question if you all, so.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, um, just two, three little questions. This was under the previous demonstration that we, I think we voted on, and I, I then, I think we voted on this demonstration as well, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we voted on.
Okay, another thing is, um, as I learned through the ADECA, a lot of time when they're willing to give grants, we don't move forward with it, uh, the, won't we catch the devil by getting some from them in the future?
Well, it, it can, it can impact it. They're not gonna tell you, oh, well, you'll never get another grant.
It, it, that will, it depends on how you handle it.
Ultimately, it's, um, the, the catchy thing with this one, you know, when you have grants that are transferred through from a state, from a federal entity down through a state. A state can tell you, oh, yeah, sure, just apply, but they don't have to give it to you. They decide and not with anyone, impact on their end because their money is basically coming from the federal.
The other question, I got two, three more things. The other question is, have we invested money already into this project?
That's where, yeah, that was, that's gonna be the kind of, we've invested money and time this way on it.
Roughly, how much, how much we don't got into it already?
Um, at the end of the day, we're gonna, uh, probably end up spending about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, no matter if we say we're gonna. no matter if we say we're going to scrap this and go nowhere. And then what could happen, then, if we want to, say, let's say we want to do another project from ADCA, we're going to have to go through that same process again and hope we get it. And then once we get it, we have to start this whole process over again in regards to getting everything. So that's our ultimate, where we are with that.
Mr. President, you know, the reason why I got a lot to mention about this is because here it is in Watie, and I understand Watie used to entertain and district. Counselwoman Thomas, if you don't mind, all that, you know, I don't believe that. Please let me get my phone, let me get my...
Yes, please.
Let me finish, please, let me finish. Okay, so basically, if we can at least look into the situation, we've got this far with it. Kids need something to do. If you look downtown, downtown is slowly growing. There's something going on both sides of Watie Avenue. When we put that park in there during the demonstration, I noticed people, it's constantly, the kids during the summer, it's down in that park area. I think, you know, like I said, if it's something that we came beforehand by our mouth, before we got invested into the splash park, I probably would probably went against it. But right now, we're too far gone. Else I heard the last council meeting, we're too far gone now. You know, we already got started. So let's move forward. So my point is this, I hope we can look into this and see, can we go ahead? And we got the matcha, right? It's a matcha. And you don't know exactly what that match is.
It's seven five thousand.
Seven five thousand, okay. And right now, we're spending a lot of money other places as well. But I think this summer is getting best for the kids, getting them something to do. I know the kids go down into the park in the summer, they play downtown, it's steady growing. St. James really going to have, people are booming. I see a lot of people buying amphitheaters down there. I think they got a place called the River, something on the river, which I think is...
The Center for River, the Humandys, what's the name of that place?
It's beautiful, yeah. And it's steady growing. So what I'm saying is, we as a citizen, as councilpeople, we need to look into this. Downtown is growing. Direct there by the amphitheater, I mean, behind the, on the corner there, I see they're doing some activity. You know, so we really need to look, right, opportunities or something. You know, so I think there's something we really need to look into and try to see what we can do to invest in this. Again, I'm just one voice. It is in Watie. I'm not all about just Watie, the things and entertainment. It ain't about Watie, it's about the whole city, because everybody have opportunity to be there. So I appreciate, Mr. Thompson, because I really wanted to go along with that.
I also want to mention, I know Counselwoman Yonka mentioned this. She spoke with, in regards to the actual contractor who we're trying to award this contract to as well. I don't, he has been down here several times, and I don't think he would have any objections to speaking to any of you who are actually coming before you all in regards to answering any question that you all have in regards to implementing this process or putting this thing in place. That was my...
Who, Brian or Cedric?
I've seen them, I've seen them in the first contract.
Oh.
Breaks up.
Oh, I got you.
They have done a lot of them, all up in state.
Where? You answered some, before you got here, it was said that it was, it had, Counselwoman Jackson's question had been asked and answered. And it seems like you said you don't know the answer of what ADCA might, you don't know how to find out.
Well, I would have loved to have actually gotten them on the phone. My whole interpretation of this came from Alabama Tom Bigby. Because they will tell you, I don't know whether they can legally just say, well, we're not going to give you another grant for doing that. I just, from what they told me, it's frowned upon. That was the ultimate.
Okay, I just want to, and it's always, as Counselwoman Yonka has said, it's always how we handle the situation. You've been working in it long enough to know that as well, I can phone calls with you, and how we handle our situation in your report is the reason we got this result. Concerning that, that I had been concerned about, it was the way in which you and I got on the phone and spoke with them personally, so we built a relationship, and it turned out in our favor. And so, thank you for that phone call. So it is always, almost always, how we handle the situation. Also, you've been on a trip to California.
I have.
West Coast, those trips to California. Will you report to us next, when we come back in January, concerning your trip to California?
Sure.
Okay, so, okay, I'm excited about it. I just heard it took great time that you're in California. You traveled to California. Okay, so I'm looking forward to that report.
Counselwoman Jackson.
Counsel, I mean, Mr. Thompson, my first, can you tell me where exactly the splash pad will be? Is it down near the park?
Yeah, it's going to be at the circle, and it, this has been planned out long before, and it was kind of implemented into just the area, which is closer to that red building that we just recently purchased. It's going to be actually about maybe fifteen feet east, I think, of the building. It's going to be about fifteen feet, and it's going to be a part of the trail which was done in the park already, and it had a half circle already. Ultimately, what they're going to do, they're going to complete the other side of that circle, and which, it was going to be equipped with benches. And we don't have money for shade and things like that, which we were kind of hoping for donations. And that was the intent that would start with this prior to me actually coming along. And we still have the brochures where you could buy brick, that's correct. You could buy a brick, you could add certain things, as well as, we also have ten thousand dollars worth of funding specifically for that splash pad. Twenty-five hundred dollars was given by ITT, and seventy-five hundred was given by Alabama Power for that. And if eventually, we could either say, well, it wasn't sufficient or whatever, along those lines. But ultimately, the goal would be to put that there. It was mentioned regarding dressing room, changing area being in that little red building, because it's so close, a building on the outside, to where you can add those issues on, because plumbing is already in that building, which makes it a whole lot easier to add on to something that's already there. That's what's really ended up cutting the cost on this splash pad itself, because the water was already coming out there because of that building.
Let me interject, this was in about two or three minutes. I brought a call for a motion to adjourn to allow transition time between both meetings. So Counselwoman Jackson and Counselwoman Thomas, please make it brief when I make it to you, so that we can allow time for the track. Wait, you want me to, to counsel? Okay, Counselwoman Jackson, Counselwoman LaShaw, and Counselwoman Thomas, and I'll call for a motion to, well, we don't need a motion, we're in work session. Okay, we'll end that after these three come. Yes, go ahead, Counselwoman.
What I wanted to know specifically was, have we addressed the sinkhole in that area? I know the last time that I went down there...
No, no, that was an issue that we've been working with through, and I have been waiting to bring that to you all. But ultimately, what I didn't want to do is bring it to you, and I don't have a cost estimate for what it's going to cost to do that project. And I've been working with Ray Hall, trying to get numbers on that project for quite some time now. But I don't have any concrete numbers estimate wise of what it's going to cost to do that repair over there. What potentially, one of the things that I had... Alabama Tom Bigby Regional Commission, they were trying to reach out for Delta Regional to see if we could possibly, or fix them in regards to some disaster relief, because it was caused by rain, or a broken pipe, or something along that line. So the major reason it had come before you all to get repaired yet is because I don't have a good, solid price of what it's going to cost to fix. And that's also hindering me applying for funding from the federal level as well, because you got to know how much it's going to cost, so you know how much to ask.
Right, and so that's the only issue currently, because I don't want to put us in a position that we forfeit something that we otherwise could utilize. But having that, we're not in a situation, and I think I think...
Which could be a very serious situation because of the severity of that sinkhole there. And I'm very familiar with it.
Yes, sir. So because of the severity of it, and I sent it to Councilman McJohnson back on June ninth, and the constituents sent it to me, and he got right on the issue and thanked me for sending it to him. And I'm glad you all addressed it. The last time I went down there, there was yellow tape, but I'm concerned.
Somebody had removed it too.
They removed it.
Yeah, I've been watching that site very closely.
Because if we, if we put the splash pad down there, and not choose from the stars coming down in that area, we're setting ourselves up for a real serious situation.
Counselwoman LaShaw, and then Counselwoman Thomas, and we're going to coast this out, and y'all can start disappearing for the transition.
Counselwoman, I would agree. However, I do concur with my colleague, Counselwoman Johnson, about the impact it will have on the content, the development of Watie Avenue. The development of Watie Avenue was very vital to this city, and I concur that that passion can be in addition to the development. The question about whether or not it will have a negative impact, do we reject this grant? Your answer, the reason that that was the same house, to give us something back. I don't know if it was a voice session or at a council meeting. If it was in a council meeting, then naturally, the medical reflect exactly what your answers were. But it doesn't matter what your answer would be. The fact is that it could. Ain't nothing I can tell you about your body, but what they will remember is what you rejected. And they would just be within their rights to do that. Once again, this splash pad is something that I feel will be an asset to the city, and I wish this council would support Watie and get that splash pad.
Counselwoman Thomas, and we are going to disappear for a minute, some of the lockup transition.
Yes, Henry.
Yes, ma'am.
Who do, we have some issues with the park down there. We have people that take the kids down there with those steps. Who fix those steps, because they're in danger for the kids there?
Yes, that...
And parents are very concerned, that needs to be, that needs to be fixed.
It does, it does. And what we're waiting on, we're just trying to get a cost estimate for the project. And Ray Hall is currently working on that, and we're, not only are we working on the cost estimate, we're trying to figure out how we can get, so the city won't have to bear all of that cost to fix, prepare that as well. But I do agree with you, and I think it probably needs to be cautioned off a little better.
Yes, because you have a lot, you have certain tasks that the kids in the park down there, every day. You know, they're down in that area, and they were concerned, so...
Yeah, I've been over there, and I've taken pictures. It's a very serious issue that kind of needs to be taken care of. And I'm going to be meeting with Ray Hall as well, because of the CDB2 project that we've got going on. That should be getting ready to wrap up. I'm going to be meeting with him regarding that, as well as another project that we've got going on. So I should have some good, solid numbers on that coming next week. And once we get those solid numbers, we'll present them to you without us having any other assistance, federal or state assistance. And then we will go into whatever options we can offer.
We need to do it. Please also make sure you speak with Counselwoman Thomas as well. Y'all may want to take another trip down there and gather. We are going to...
I have photos as well. There's actually a broken pipe down in, at the bottom of...
Counselmembers, you all have to return on time. We're going to let you exit to the right, to the reception area, and then we'll invite everyone else, because you all, we have to start on time at five o'clock. We'll let you exit that way, right there in the hall is where the reception will start, right there, councilmember. So if you all will go ahead, we're going to invite everybody else right there. Y'all have to be back on time, we have to be back on time. So right behind, right behind, please join us for a quick chat and to mingle and all that.